We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Counselor Neper, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
In the spirit of the upcoming Memorial Day, I want to say a prayer for our veterans. Heavenly Father, as we remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice for the freedoms that we enjoy every day, we think of how they have followed in the footsteps of your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Please hold our servicemen and women in your strong arms, cover them with your sheltering grace and your presence as they stand in a gap for our protection. Let us also remember the families of our troops. We ask for your unique blessings to fill their homes, and we pray your peace, provision, and strength fulfill their lives. May the members of our armed forces be supplied with courage to face each day, and may they trust in the Lord's mighty power to accomplish each task. Let our military brothers and sisters feel our love and support in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Teppin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here.
Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Nixon, I'd like to move to amend tonight's agenda by moving Resolution 613 to the beginning of the agenda, to include add-on Communication Number 11, to grant privilege of the floor to Deborah Odom, and to add Chief Martin and Rose Christian to the reports of officials.
Second. Motion, the second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes, I ask for privilege to the floor.
Is he here?
Yes.
Okay. For Mr. Voringer?
Yes.
Is an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Okay, the motion in the second then is to revise tonight's agenda by moving Resolution 613 to the beginning of the meeting, adding Deborah Odom and Mr. Voringer under the privilege of the floor, adding Communication Number 11, and adding the reports of officials with Chief Martin and Rose Christian. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. First on the agenda then is Resolution 613.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Resolution Number 0613 be adopted on its first reading after having been read.
Second. The motion, the second, is to adopt Resolution 613 on its first reading after having been read. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll have the clerk read the resolution.
Memorializing the late John Rudolph, outstanding Lima citizen, and extending condolences to his family on behalf of the Lima City Council. Whereas on April 16, 2013, the entire Lima Land community was saddened by the death of John Rudolph, a visionary, successful entrepreneur, and community leader whose many contributions have and will continue to affect the Lima Land community. And whereas launching Rudolph Foods in 1955, John built the company into a multimillion-dollar corporation, and today the company consists of seven domestic and two international plants. Mr. Rudolph, as John was affectionately known, never retired and stayed involved with the company until his death. And whereas John had a passion to serve the community, and he spearheaded the construction of the Lima Streetscape Project in the 1970s, the Lima Allen County Civic and Convention Center in the 1980s, a new downtown YMCA in the 1990s, the Ottawa River Bike Path Extension in 2008, and most recently the restoration of the Snorf Building to house the Chamber of Commerce and the City Club. And whereas John Rudolph was committed to his community and served on many charitable and service organizations, he was president of the Lima Rotary Club, the Lima Chamber of Commerce, the Lima YMCA Board of Directors, St. Luke's Church Council, chairman of the United Way Campaign, and board member for both Lima Memorial Hospital and Tower Bank. And whereas John was a natural-born leader, and he will forever be admired by his family, friends, coworkers, and community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Lima, Ohio, that the Council of the City of Lima hereby acknowledges the many contributions of John Rudolph which have and will continue to benefit our citizens, and that the Council on behalf of the entire community expresses its condolences to his family and friends.
Is there any discussion? Before I present the resolution, I just want to thank you, the Rudolph family, for all that you've done for the community. I had the privilege of attending high school, well, school, with Kathy and Suzie and Jim and Rich, and I see Suzie, Jim, and Richard here this evening. This isn't easy, and I'm sure that your loss is also very, very hard, and I appreciate everything that your father did for this community, that you as a family have done for this community. I hope that those traditions and that dedication will continue. It's a sad privilege to be able to vote on this and pass it, but my condolences and all of our condolences to your family. I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Resolution 613 has been passed, adopted on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. I'll ask the Rudolph family to come forward and present.
Thank you.
Under privilege of the floor, we have Deborah Odom. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Deborah Odom. I live at 402 South Jameson. What I've come to talk about is the pit bulls that I'm sure that you're aware of. I have a couple of them that are neighbors to me, and there is... I have an ongoing war going on with my neighbors, and an ongoing war that will not be, that will, nobody will take place in this neighborhood. Nobody will take it by the hand and say, "This is what we're going to do. These are the rules. You guys have made the rules, and this is what it's going to be." I have two grandchildren, and I want to keep my grandchildren. They have been attacked, and I want to keep my grandchildren. It is in court right now, but they're not doing anything. It has been seen, right here, that these people have been seen walking these dogs without muzzles in the neighborhood, and the next step is I am going to subpoena people in the neighborhood, in this area. It's going to be subpoenaed to court. And I don't want to have to call out any names, but my next step is if they don't come out willingly, then I'm going to have to be forced to do what I need to do. And the thing is, the people next door to me's daddy owns money, and I don't, and that's what the thing is. So, that's where I'm standing. This picture is yours. This is one of my pit bull I'm dealing with, and that's one of my grandkids back here. I have multiple knee replacements. I cannot run from a pit bull, and I don't plan on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next under privilege of the floor is Mr. Voringer. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. I come up here tonight to respectfully request that the city council set up a meeting between me and the city of Lima, Mayor Berger, on the property damage that Mella Pipeline did to my sidewalks. I'm being told that it is my responsibility to get Mella Pipeline to repair the sidewalks, but this is city property, not my property. I need help. Also, I'd like to know, and the neighborhood would like to know, why Newswell wasn't put down and the base clay that was dug up during the construction of the gas lines, whether or not that homeowner grants are available for major home repairs by homeowners, and if there's any way to keep the alleys clean and mowed, to try to keep down mosquitoes during the summertime.
Okay. So you're asking that be referred to a committee?
All the above.
Okay. We will do that under miscellaneous business.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Item B in the consent calendar be received and filed, and that Item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is that Item A be received, filed, and approved, and Item B be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number One.
From the Director of the Department of Community Development regarding legislation for property maintenance assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication Number One be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number One. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Two.
From the Mayor regarding legislation to amend the Lima New Jobs Program.
Mr. President.
Mr. Teppin.
I move that Communication Number Two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Three.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation for disbursement of funds from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Three receive and file, and allow the law director to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Three, and authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Four.
From Chief Martin requesting legislation to apply for a cops hiring or coverage program.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication Number Four receive and file. Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Five.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding legislation to enter into a contract with the FOP Rangers.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Communication Number Five be received and filed. Is that... Do we need...
Yeah, the mayor's authorized the legislation already.
Okay. But it's not on tonight's agenda.
Correct. Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Six.
From the Director of Human Resources regarding legislation for seasonal pay scale.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Communication Number Six be received and filed. That legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Seven.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Teppin.
I move that Communication Number Seven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Eight.
From the Director of Public Works regarding appointments to the Board of Public Nuisance Appeals.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
Move that Communication Number Eight be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Eight, and to...
Receive.
Received, received, filed, and approved. Who had the second?
Second.
Mr. Glenn. Okay, so the motion is to receive, file, and approve. Communication Number Eight. Is there any discussion? Look, it's about 89 degrees in here, okay, because the AC's not working, so it's just kind of warm and a little bit distracting, so... All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Nine.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to amend the contract with Human Supply Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that Communication Number Nine be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Ten.
From the Law Director regarding legislation to enter into a contract to renovate municipal courtrooms.
Mr. President.
Mr. Teppin.
I move that Communication Number Ten be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Ten. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication Number Eleven.
From the Director of Utilities requesting legislation to amend a contract with URS Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication Number Eleven be received and filed, and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication Number Eleven, and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next is Reports of Officials, and we have Chief Martin and Ms. Rose Christian from the RTA.
Mr. President, councilmembers. Roseanne Christian, the Executive Director of the Lima Allen County Regional Transit Authority, and I are here tonight to brief council on the impacts of the ongoing partnership between the RTA and the Lima Police Department. The purpose of this partnership is to provide a safer environment for those members of our community who, whether by necessity or by their choice, take advantage of the services provided by RTA. Now, I really cannot discuss this partnership without first expressing my appreciation to Ms. Christian for contacting me in January of last year to begin exploring ways that the RTA and the LPD could partner together. From that initial contact, a plan was developed for officers to ride on the RTA buses. LPD personnel were also made available to provide training for RTA personnel on topics such as crime prevention, personal safety, how to report crimes in progress, drug and alcohol training, as well as others. In total, since the first bus ride taken by an LPD officer on February 27 of last year, officers have logged a total of 268 rides as of this past Friday, May 17. The time spent by officers riding on the buses totaled more than 130 hours. Though the average time per ride has been roughly about 30 minutes each, some have been for a shorter duration of 10 minutes, while at least a couple of others have lasted about an hour. The officers ride on different routes at different times of day and night so as to not allow, or so as to not allow anyone who might want to cause problems or engage in criminal activity on the buses to know when or where the officers will be getting on or off the routes. The RTA and their customers have not been the only ones to realize a benefit from this partnership. LPD officers have been given opportunities for positive non-enforcement-related contacts with the public that we serve that simply, frankly, we would not have had otherwise. This same benefit is realized by officers walking foot patrols or riding bike patrol, so it's really not anything new in terms of the concept of getting out amongst people. The officers are certainly much more approachable as passengers than if they remained in their cruisers only driving by the buses. Yet, at the same time, they are still able to remain vigilant for criminal activity while they're riding, and hopefully obtaining usable intelligence information regarding criminal activities occurring within the city. As our partner, the RTA has also installed bike racks in the front of their vehicles. This allows bike officers to mount their patrol bikes on the buses, ride to another area of the city, remove their bikes, and begin bike patrols in that area. This allows for more flexible use of bike patrols throughout the community. Again, I want to thank Ms. Christian for initiating this partnership, and I believe the partnership between the Regional Transit Authority and the Lima Police Department will continue to provide value not only to the police department, but to the entire community. Now, at this time, I would like to turn the podium over to Ms. Christian.
Mr. President and council. It's been an honor and a privilege to work with the Lima Police Department this last year. What originally began as a request for information on how to improve the safety and security of our bus operators as we were preparing to extend our service into the evening hours has become a unique and savvy way to maximize our community resources. I appreciate Chief Martin's progressive approach on this, to this ongoing project, as without it, we never would have known the joint benefits. The bus operators at Lima Allen County RTA are very appreciative of the efforts of the Lima Police Department officers who board our buses and interact with passengers. The bus operators feel a sense of safety and security in that presence. And recently, I'll go off script just a minute, but recently, we had the chief come back and discuss at our employee meeting what has been the outcome for the police department, and overwhelmingly, the employees were incredibly grateful. "Thank you, thank you, thank you for coming onboard our buses." So, it was, it was a good thing for them, and they expressed so. They, the passengers have also grown to appreciate this, and they're increasingly, are increasingly communicating with the officers on various subjects. We've benefited from the training LPD has provided the bus operators and other employees this last year. He's mentioned a few of them. It's been a real asset to us to have this local resource to be able to come in, and that develops even stronger partnership as these officers or lieutenants or the, the different people that have come in and do the training. That strengthens that relationship. We look forward to additional training this year, including a modified Alice exercise to help prepare our employees to know how to respond in the event of a hostage or a shooting situation. Additionally, our Lima Allen County RTA has been able to count the labor hours of the officers riding on the bus and the time spent training toward our local match for federal funds. In 2012, we amounted to just over $4,000, so that was helpful, too, another benefit. Our ridership grew by over 40% last year. Now, that is because of the extension of hours as well, but it was something that we noticed, not just for the extended hours. Above and beyond that, we still had ridership increase. We would have a difficult time trying to quantify, that part of it is due to the efforts of the Lima Police Department, but it's certain that our passengers would not ride if they did not feel that it was safe. And for that, we do thank Chief Martin and all the officers who have participated in this partnership. Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is Reports of Committees. The Community and Economic Development Committee, report.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you. The Community and Economic Development Committee met on May 13 at 5:30. The subject was, again, junk and abandoned autos. The chair went through review of what had been commented on in the previous two meetings, which are noted in the minutes here. There was some discussions. Major Cortez was recognized to walk us through a flow chart that was supplied to us, and during this development of this flow chart, it was discovered that there was some duplication of, of some efforts made by not only the LPD, but also community development. A lot of good constructive comments were made. One I would like to point out, if I may, Counselor Tibbin had stated, you know, currently our standards are so low and our resources are so limited that that is why we see what we see in our city now. It's gotten to be acceptable. Going forward, the committee recaptured what had been discussed, asked that the departments, Law Department, Community Development, and LPD meet again, develop a new flow chart on the ideal situation. A comment had been made earlier about bringing in the landlords in to discuss this issue and get their input before moving forward, which will be the intent of the chair to do. I've compiled a list already per the suggestion of Counselor McLean, and the utility department has worked with me. And then going forward also, Counselor Lowe would like to see a notice sent for each car on the property, and not just one notice listing all the cars. A motion was made to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Glenn, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:27 PM. Mr. President, I'd move that the committee report be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the committee report as submitted by Counselor Adams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. The Public Works Committee report. Mr. Neper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee report for the Public Works Committee on May 15, 2013, to discuss the two items that are on second reading this evening. No action was taken by the committee. Everyone has received a copy of the minutes. I ask they be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the committee meeting report as submitted by Counselor Neper. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Moving on to ordinances. Ordinance 9413.
This is a second reading authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Allen Soil and Water Conservation District.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that Ordinance Number 9413 be passed on its second reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 9413 on its first reading. Is there, I'm sorry, on its second reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neper.
No.
Mr. McLean.
No.
Mr. Lowe.
No.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 9413 will be placed on third reading, failing to get the six required votes to approve it on its second reading. Ordinance 9513.
This is a second reading authorizing the mayor to accept donations and purchase certain real property for the all-Lima Bike Path Phase 5 project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that Ordinance Number 9513 be passed on its second reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 9513 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 9513 has been passed on its second reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 9713.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Ms. Adams.
Mr. President, I move that Ordinance Number 97-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 9713 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend. Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 9713 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 9813.
Amending the 2013 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 98-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 9813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nepper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 9913 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 113.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and administer funds from the U.S. Department of Justice Cops Hiring Recovery Program.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Order 100-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 113 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nepper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 113 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10113.
Authorizing payment to the West Central Ohio Crime Task Force from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund account.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Order 10113 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 1013 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nepper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 113 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10113.
Authorizing payment to the West Central Ohio Crime Task Force from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund account.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Order 10113 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 10113 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nepper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 10113 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10213.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Medical Mutual of Ohio to purchase stock loss coverage as part of the city's employee healthcare benefit plan.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Ordinance 10213 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 10213 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nepper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 10213 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10313.
Establishing the positions and classifications herein after set forth and fixing the salary and compensation of such positions and classifications, repealing existing inconsistent ordinances as herein described.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that Ordinance 10313 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 10313 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nepper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 10313 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10413.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and administer additional funds from the Ohio Attorney General Moving Forward Grant.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 10413 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 10413 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nepper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 10413 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10513.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for landscape repairs for the utilities department.
Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 105-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 10513 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nepper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 10513 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10613.
Amending Ordinance 23512.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nepper.
I move that Ordinance Number 10613 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 10613 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nepper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 10613 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10713.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of a new loader for the Public Works Department.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nepper.
I move that Ordinance Number 10713 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 10713 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nepper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 10713 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10813.
Authorizing the mayor to dispose of a 1998 case loader.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nepper.
I move that Ordinance Number 10813 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 10813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nepper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 10813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 10913.
Amending Chapter 882 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that Ordinance 109-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 10913 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nepper.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 10913 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Before we leave the ordinance section of the agenda, I apologize for my lack of attention when it came time to make a motion on a ordinance, but I was puzzled by Ordinance 94-13 going to the third reading, and I'd like to know either by utility director if this one had a deadline of June 1st attached to it to do the application or apply.
Mr. Shealy.
I guess, like, Mr. President, the response I guess I had, this is a stormwater grant, so it'd have to be Hunter Howard's or Joe Geering's office to see. We're not involved in it.
Okay.
What you got is hard to read up.
Yeah.
Yes, June, June 1st is the deadline. Have funds deposited without stormwater.
And I wanted to bring that to council's attention, that we may need to meet again prior to June 1st.
Okay.
Which is a Saturday. So, because we won't meet again till June 3rd.
Right. It will require a special meeting. Okay, as we go through the miscellaneous business, when it comes to me, we'll talk about a date for that meeting. Mr. Nepper.
Nothing this evening.
Mr. McLean.
Just one item. Just want to remind people that Northside Neighborhood Association is going to have a meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM in St. Gerard's Parish Hall. That's it, sir.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe.
One thing this evening, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to place the College Street sidewalk and Neighborhood Concerns into a joint Public Works and Neighborhood Concerns Committee.
Second. The motion in the second is to replace the issue of the, that was raised by Mr. Boehringer, correct?
Correct.
Regarding the College Street project in a committee, both the Neighborhood Concerns and Public Works Committee for review and discussion. All those in favor of the motion?
Mr. President.
Sorry, is there any discussion on the motion?
I'm confused, Mr. President. I mean, I thought we had discussed some of this, that it would be upon them to submit a claim, and then based on those action, it possibly would then go to a committee.
I, we, we had discussed that, and his request was to have a meeting, okay? Now, what I'm going to recommend is that prior to that meeting, that the chair of that committee allow the administration to prepare a report on this so that the committee has it in advance to discuss what has happened with it. And then it can be talked about, and his avenues to pursue can be reviewed with them at the committee meeting.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nepper.
I mean, along those lines, without sounding disrespectful to our constituents, are we going to have a meeting every time someone requests that we have a meeting?
I didn't make the motion to put it in committee.
Okay.
Okay? I mean, if you don't want it to go to committee, it can be, he can simply be communicated with.
No, I just mean, I mean, we've already acknowledged several times that this is not necessarily in our purview, so.
I agree.
I mean, I don't want to have a meeting just to set precedent of having a meeting because somebody said you should have a meeting on.
Right. I don't disagree. Frankly, I'm not in favor of it going to committee, okay? That's his request, but I'm not in favor of it going to committee. Excuse me. It's not the role of the committee. I mean, this is something that the work has already been done, and he is not satisfied, and he needs to make his complaint through the appropriate avenues, and the committee process is not the appropriate avenue. Okay? It needs to go either allow the administration to respond to it, or he can file a claim through the Claims Advisory Board. Okay? So, Mr. Lowe.
I was just wondering if I still had the floor. Do I still have the floor?
There were under discussion, on the motion.
Okay. The reason that I was, the reason that I was setting this is because, one, he is our constituent, my constituent, he asked for it, and I feel that he should have the opportunity. I wasn't going to set the meeting until June 3rd, which is going to give administration plenty of time to set a package together that we can present at the meeting. The meeting could go five minutes, it could go 50 minutes, but I was, I was going to give the administration time to put their stuff together. And it's, it's been put on, it's been seconded, we can take a vote if it happens, it happens.
Okay? Is there any further discussion? Mayor.
It would be helpful to clarify what the issue is. As, as I understood it, based upon the phone call that came in and that I tried to return this afternoon, this had to do with a crack in his sidewalk. Your information and the pre-council broadened that to several property owners, and so it's not clear to me what the issue is for us to investigate and report back. So, that would be helpful to know.
Okay, I can tell you right now.
What is the scope?
Okay, the, the scope is his sidewalk has three cracks that he claims was not in it previous to the contractors that the city hired. Okay, the scope is, his sidewalk has three cracks that he claims was not in it previous to the contractors that the city hired. Okay, I personally went out and looked at some things.
So, it's, it's cracks in his sidewalk that he alleges that our contractor that did the sewer created?
The sewer work, and he didn't understand, and I explained to him the difference, what the gas company did and what the city did.
Okay.
Okay? And, I mean, we can have an open door with, you know, with them also, but at the end of the day, I think we should honor his request.
The three, the three cracks in his sidewalk, that is what we're investigating.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President. Okay, Mr. Tevin. I, I won't support this going to committee because I think that we can still serve our constituents, we have, we have processes in place, and I have the same fear that Mr. Nieper expressed, that just because somebody says, "I want you to have a meeting," there may be a different way to handle it. I have had many issues in my time on council that constituents have brought to me, and I, and I've explained to them, and I know you've tried, there is a process when you're not happy with the answer you receive to file with the Claims Advisory Board. I also always advise my constituents that more than likely, you're going to be denied, and at that point, I can, if they send me a communication, I will gladly refer the issue at that point to a committee for discussion and consideration as a moral obligation, you know, and, and if I, if I truly believe that's where, where the thing should, should go, but I personally don't support holding a committee meeting just because somebody said, "Hold, hold a meeting." I, I want to make sure that they're doing their part, and their part is, in this case, Mr. Lowe, I truly believe that their part is to file an appropriate claim with the city and, and follow the process that's been laid out. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tevin, is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
And I disagree with that. I've not seen many cases that we not had that we had sent to committee, and I wasn't one to support them because we're dealing with taxpayers here. What going to hurt us, just to look at it? If he had, he spent this time out here, the mayor said he going to check it out, let's give him that benefit of the doubt. The man, he's very upset, and we work for these people. And I've seen many times, I've been on Tinder a long time, the city council, I see many times, we not went out there, people we know, and we take care of business, we take a committee, we fight them for different things and all that, and I, I don't care how we trying to call it, how, how we trying to cosmetic. We need to work for the folk, we work for these people, and I feel that we should go in there and look at it, give them an answer, and that's it. But I think we should give them benefit of the doubt. It's not going to hurt us at that time, it's not going to hurt us to come in here and look some over that we don't know what happened there. You know, if that was your property, you'll be upset about it too. But I've been here long enough to see cases that I shouldn't even support it, because it's dealing with somebody well-known, we know, and they did, this is their property, we going to take it to a committee, we going to pay them. I've seen that happen too. So, I think we should just take the opportunity, take our time, and just, and give him an answer, and we check it out. And I don't think that's not tough enough to do, you know, we got to show our peoples in, in this city that we care about. We got to show them that, and we do care about them. We do want to make our city a better place to live, but we don't want to make it tough, I mean, this, he already very, very upset right now, you know, and I see these things happen all the time. Yes, I go tell the people, hey, you know, what we can do, I try to talk them out of it and say, hey, there's nothing we can do, but we can try to do something, and I think he'll feel better. Is he going to feel, might not, but the deal is though, this happened to his property, we don't know what happened, his work against the contractor work, let's look into it and find out what's going on, take a little time out, find out, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I don't disagree with Mr. Glenn, except that I believe the administration should be able to go out and look at that and take care of that situation. Whether or not it comes to our committee, a committee or not, is entirely up to them. If they come back to, to, I guess it's going to be Jesse, and tell Jesse, hey, this is still an issue, we might want to talk with the guy. If Jesse wants to hold a meeting, fine, if he don't, never hold a meeting. At the same time, it allows our administration, which is to do their administrative job and not, because we're not administrative, we're only legislating. And let them go out and look at it, and then I'm sure that they can take their decisions and bring it back to voice it to Jesse to whether or not he wants to call a time, we're going to have a meeting. And they have plenty of time to do that, we don't have to have one on June 3rd. We're still working on it.
Just a second, Mr. Nieper, did you have your hand up?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay, all right, Mr. Lowe.
And, and that is the reason, Mr. President, why I set the date almost two and a half weeks out, to give administration time to go out, speak, and, and see if they can rectify it before the meeting. We've had many meetings canceled, I mean, the meeting could be canceled, I just, if, if they can't, then I think we should have the opportunity to sit down and speak.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I just want to make note that whether there's support here tonight, again, it's the residence, this gentleman with his sidewalk, the person with the curb issue, which I think is valid, I would be surprised if, once it's filed a claim, if it's denied, that that curb should be finished, that's what we don't know. And even having a meeting, we can't determine that. Once we get a denial, as Counselor Tevin said, we can bring it back to all of us and make it a moral obligation, if it goes to that degree. But I also want to point out that on June 3rd, and it's been published, we're having a meeting here, it's the public hearing, number one, it's the proposed allocations for the CDBG at 5:00 in this chamber. I serve as chair on that committee, Counselor Glenn serves as member, and so does Counselor McLean. I also serve on the Public Works Committee, and I can't be in two places at one time, you know, so the 5:00 is a lock, and my obligation is for this public hearing. So, I just wanted to let you know that was on the calendar already.
Okay. I'm going to make this suggestion, okay, and, and I'm not going to support it going to committee at this time, okay? I think that there are processes in place that need to be gone through. One, the communication with the administration, number two, Small Claims Advisory Review Board, and then, if it's appropriate, it should be referred to a council committee. And, Mr. McLean, you hit it on the head, we are legislative, we are not the mediators of every dispute that goes on. And to short circuit and circumvent processes that are already in place and have proven to, a lot of cases resolve issues, I think need to be allowed to work.
Mr. President. I'm so concerned about the scope of this issue. Mr. Lowe has narrowed it to three cracks in his sidewalk. Mrs. Adams just referenced uncompleted curbing, and the gentleman that was here referenced alley maintenance. So, I truly don't know what...
Yeah, I, I understand, and, and that, I guess, is where I'm saying, that perhaps having Public Works and/or Utilities, whoever was involved in the work there, to meet with him and deal with his issues. The others, frankly, have yet to come forward, okay?
Yeah.
And it's their responsibility to come forward to the administration if there's a complaint.
Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Lowe.
I don't understand where there's confusion. I, the mayor asked me what we was going to do, and I said it, and if other councilmen spoke and said something else, that's on them. I called a meeting for the three cracks that's concerning his area. Just take the vote, if it doesn't pass, we move forward.
I was actually going to respectfully ask you to withdraw the motion at this time and wait until the third, the meeting on the 3rd if there's no resolution. But you're, you don't want to do that, okay, fine. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Are we going to do a roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper.
No.
I got to write these down, so give me a second.
Okay.
McLean. Mr. McLean.
No.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
No.
Ms. Adams.
No.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
No.
And Mr. Nixon.
No. The motion to refer the issue to committee fails to pass, it's two in favor of and six against. Is there anything further, Mr. Glenn?
No.
All right, Mr. Tevin.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Adams.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a couple announcements. CDBG home applications must be submitted by this Friday, May 24th, by 5:00 p.m. to the Department of Community Development. As I said earlier, June 3rd at 5:00 p.m. a public hearing, number one, where the proposed allocations will be presented to the public and to the Committee of Economic Development at that time. So, committee members, please make note of that, June 3rd at 5:00 p.m. here in the, in the conference, in the chamber. I'd like to mention EMS Week was announced in the paper yesterday, and would like to thank all those ladies and gentlemen that serve in that capacity. Thank you for your service and for your giving of your talent and saving lives. Lacknick will have a fundraiser, chicken dinner on May 27th at the Resource Center from 11:00 to 2:00, and the Resource Center is located at 1440 West Spring Street, and the tickets ahead of time are $8. That day, they will be $9, and the drive-through will be available. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, Mr. Glenn.
Yes, I got a couple things here. First of all, I think everyone was calling me about my, I'm okay, just had to wear the patch a little bit here. June 1st, we have a cleanup there, Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association, and also, we're part Neighborhood Association, we have a cleanup. So, this weekend, the holiday weekends are idle there, so we hoping that everyone come out and support getting everything cleaned up around the area. Everyone been doing a great job, I'm very excited about it, and I know we got some grass cutting to do. Got a lot of yards and a lot of folks need grass cutting, but this is the season for it, and some empty lines, and we see the guys going out cutting them, and getting the areas that need to be cut, the houses need to be cut. Also, we are Memorial Day, we will be having our, if everyone will come out, we see our young kids playing their first softball game, they'll be playing a scrimmage against their parents, and we just want to really get them ready to go, so we hopefully, they'll be ready to play baseball next year. But I'd have a lot of interesting in that involve, and I'd like to thank all the folks who help out with that, you know, and putting that project together. Also, we are still going out getting signatures for, for the Head Start program, we will be turning them signatures in Friday. So, next Friday, we will, we just send them a man letter, a lot of response to that, thank you so much for all that. And everyone have a happy Memorial Day, and if you have your first barbecue, we pray and hope the gas go down so everyone can travel. Thank you.
Ms. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President, just one thing, for the 7th Ward cleanup, Mr. Glenn mentioned Martin Luther King, but the 7th Ward will have a dumpster at the Superior Credit Union on Allentown Road, June 1st, Saturday, June 1st, from 9:00 to 12:00. And everybody, clean your junk out, bring it over. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend.
Into the dust.
Yes.
You can give you a bird. You can get a pron.
The items I have, I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe Memorial Day, keep our veterans and our servicemen and women in mind, keep them in your prayers, I would also like to offer congratulations to all of this year's graduates, the year of 2013 graduates, and hopefully they
That's right.
have good weather and safe graduation parties and a very bright and prosperous future. That's the good news. Bad news is, I need to call a special counsel meeting for Tuesday, May 28th, at 6:30 p.m. in these chambers. Is there, I guess, everybody okay with that?